Okay, I'll call the October third, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the Mill Creek City Council to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and I'll leave it tonight.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands in recognition. We undergo individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Holdclaw.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Benio.
Here.
Councilmember Cavalier.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Duque.
Here.
And Councilmember Paddock.
Present.
Thank you. We'll go to audience communication. I understand we had a letter submitted that someone couldn't be here tonight. Then Adrian, were you gonna read that letter? Please state the person's name and address before you read the letter.
All right, this is a statement from Christie Phillips from the Cottonwood Community. I am fifty-five years old, a single working mom who has lived in Seattle, Shoreline, Kent, and Maple Valley. And living here in Mill Creek has been the happiest, healthiest, and most expensive period of my life because Mill Creek isn't cheap. But I was so lucky to be able to buy my home. I'm grateful for it every day. I invested a lot to update and repair it. With hard work, love, and sacrifice, I turned my fixer-upper into my dream home. The yard nourishes my soul. I grow berries and flowers and fruit. I welcome friends and strangers to play pickleball and pick raspberries. I host family holidays and celebrations. And I built a network of friends and family right here in Mill Creek who have become my tribe. My home isn't an investment. It's a refuge and my haven. When people ask me if I plan to downsize and move when I retire, I say absolutely not. I hope this is my forever home. So when I saw the pink circle around my house, the circle that indicated my haven would make a great spot for multifamily housing, I was terrified and enraged. I felt threatened even though logically I knew no one could take my home from me. But logic can't defeat emotion. I can't defeat panic. And when you feel threatened, it robs you of your joy and peace. It strips you of your sense of accomplishment and turns a sense of belonging into a feeling that you're a target. I lost sleep. I was consumed by worry and outrage. The community that I'd come to fill was my home now felt like my enemy. I understand for growth and the need to accommodate new residents' demands for housing. I understand that money is the basis for every decision made at every level of government, and I understand that my lot is large. Technically, it could fit a couple duplexes, but at what larger cost? At the cost of putting my home into a landfill, of destroying the nature in my backyard? The cost of me having to move far away from my tribe to find another home I could afford? I know there's a misconception that everyone in Mill Creek is wealthy. I've been attacked as being a NIMBY. I've been accused of being privileged. But here's the truth. I worked two full-time jobs to live here. I'm going back to school this week at fifty-five while working those two jobs to increase my skills so that I can continue to increase my ability to earn, to protect my ability to live here in my dream home because it continues to need things, maintenance, repairs, improvements, and taxes. And I'm determined to meet that need because this is where I've been my happiest and healthiest. In the lifetime of struggle, I found my peace and stability. Only to have a pink circle on a map indicate that larger powers have other plans for my refuge because supposedly other people need it more than I do. I think the hardest thing in this entire experience has been that the priding gratitude I felt of being a resident of Mill Creek and the MCC A turned in a heartbeat into threat and resentment. I went from feeling like a valued member of the community to feeling like an obstacle standing between developers and money. And no one in power cared. I'd like to return to feeling safe because I've earned that. I need that. Everyone does.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. Anyone in the audience like to address the council's name? Ms. Heidel. You know the drill.
Barb Heidel, fourteen oh one, one hundred forty-fourth place Southeast Mill Creek. Thank you, Mayor. After looking at the four options for the signs for the entries to the Mill Creek City, I would hope that the council would be fiscally responsible and reasonable. Having all the signs the same size is great, but we do not need to change to make them all larger. Option one, reuse, wrap, and add three to match seems fine. We do not need large monumental signs. We are a small city. Having the sign saying welcome is a wonderful idea. Let's not waste money on something too showy. There are way too many things we need to do for our city. Spending our money on this is not something we need to do except the simple, reasonable way. Simple, clean, and pleasant to the eye. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, anyone online? Okay, we'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. No presentations tonight, so old business, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome and thank Rob Pentey. As you recall, he is our consultant with nineteen sixty-one consulting. Happy to have him here today. What we are doing today is bringing forward a resolution to to get authorization to execute a contract with nineteen one, nineteen sixty-one consulting. Rob is here just to answer any last questions and just give us maybe, there's no review of what to expect as we commence the project in mid-October. So I'll just open up for questions. Otherwise, we'd like to try to execute the contract.
Any questions on the contract? See, Councilor Secor shaking his head. Any, no questions, no questions. So before we hear for next steps, why don't we entertain a motion?
Moved past a resolution of the City Council of Mill Creek, Washington approving a contract with nineteen sixty-one consulting LLC for strategic planning services.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Abstained.
Oh, you abstained?
Yes, sir.
Is there a basis for the abstention?
The long-term planning, I was never fully on board with it. I support the council's wanting to utilize nineteen sixty-one for the process. I'm just not, just never really been on board with the whole twenty-year type vision that we were talking about.
Fair enough. Rob, did you want to give us a quick roadmap on our next steps with you and the planning?
Yeah, I can tell you what to expect. There's basically four things to get kicked off in addition to, I'll obviously be providing a detailed project plan so that we can look forward in terms of where we'll want to set aside time, set sessions, et cetera. But the first steps are I'll be working with Martin and Laurel to set up interviews with key administrators, so key department heads that will give me a sense to get their take on what's going on in the city, give me a little bit of history, start to lean in on priorities. In addition to that, Martin and Laurel have already been sending me quite a bit of background information, so I've actually already started to weigh into that. We've technically set a mid-October date, but I'll tell you, I'm already gonna start leaning in to get the context that I need so that we can start interviews with staff as early as next week. And then my plan is to be up in Mill Creek. And again, we'll work scheduling, but either the week of the sixteenth or the week of the twenty-third and schedules, assuming schedules work, that will be the time that I'll do my first interviews with the council members so that I can get all of your voices into the process from the beginning. The other thing, just to put on your radar screen for October, is we're also going to be starting to look for a short list of other cities that we want to look as potential benchmarks during the process. So if you have other comparable cities that you've been looking at, be thinking about that and I'll be wanting your input on that because we'll want to create a few different proxies, if you will, that we look to for what have they done, how have they gone through the process, what's come out, and we'll use that during the discussion. So those are the first steps to get us started and then you'll be able to see more of a long-term project plan that will take us over the next six months, just so you have a sense of the roadmap of how we're gonna get there.
Great. Any questions? Thank you, Rob. We look forward to working with you and getting going in the coming weeks.
I as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Returning over directly to Scott. Item B signage.
There we go. Thanks, Adrian. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. Tonight, I'm gonna try and provide a brief history of welcome signage in a city along with four upgrading options, along with staff recommendations. So, next slide. In two thousand six, the city created a wayfinding master plan, which was a phased approach. Unfortunately, not all the phases were ever completed, which is why we still have some inconsistencies around the city. So as you can see on this map, in the top left and the bottom left are the two old ones. We all know these. Top left is Dumars Road down by McCollum Park, and the bottom left one is on one sixty-fourth as you drive into the city. The other ones are sporadically around the city. Some are very old and weathered. There was two that were installed in two thousand nine. This is something I was unaware of. I've learned a lot of history about wayfinding the last few months. So the two wooden signs are from the nineteen eighties. I'll go ahead, next slide, Adrian. So those are on the, that's the one on the left there. And then we have three signs from two thousand six. And then we have two signs from two thousand nine. So those were the newer ones installed at Thomas Lake Shopping Center and Seattle Hill Road and thirty-fifth. So back then in two thousand nine, those signs cost right around fifteen thousand dollars, and they're right around fourteen thousand dollars in, oh, go back, in two thousand six. So I don't know if anybody remembers, but back in, I think it was twenty eighteen, we lost a sign. So you may know where that sign was. It's on the south end of Bothell Everett Highway where the learning experience went in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So we had a sign way back then. Actually, also on this sign, we lost one as well. You can see in the bottom left, that's by Mill Creek Elementary, and there it is today. It's gone. It was originally gonna have another new one put in, but as you can see here, there is really no point. We have one right here. There's no need to have another one really right there.
Well, the one by Seattle or by Mill Creek Elementary was taken out because that used to say, welcome to Mill Creek, when thirty-fifth was the boundary of Mill Creek before the annexation and five-ish that took us out to Seattle.
Two thousand five?
I think it was around then that we annexed it.
Oh, okay. I think it's been there. I hit a GeoCash there back in like twenty ten.
No, the sign was there, but the annexation of the boundary was moved in two thousand. So it was there for fifteen years, saying, welcome to Mill Creek when you're in the middle of Mill Creek.
Right. Okay, I got you. Okay, cool. So in two thousand thirteen, there was a plan to replace the wood sign on one sixty-fourth and the Mill Creek, oh, here it is, in Mill Creek Elementary. But that never happened. So although the sign was removed by Mill Creek Elementary, they never upgraded the one on one sixty-fourth. So in two thousand thirteen, the signs were estimated to cost about eighteen thousand dollars. So with this new ARPA funding to help upgrade the signage, welcome signage in Mill Creek, we've come up with four options. And I'll go through each one here. Feel free to ask questions. Here's option one, reuse, wrap, and add three. So our sign company would clean and then wrap five existing signs to brand. And the example on the right, it's only an example. It's just using our branding, giving an example of what it could look like. So that's only about twelve thousand five hundred to wrap those five, and then we'd have to fabricate an additional three to match, which would be seventy-five thousand dollars. And total on that option would be eighty-seven thousand five hundred.
Can you go back to the map to show us where the three new ones would go?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not replacing one where, like the one that got taken out because the boundary is not there.
Yeah. Keep going back to the map, Adrian, a few more there. So top left, which is McCollum Park, the bottom left, which is one sixty-fourth, and then adding the one in Bothell Everett Highway at the very bottom on the south end.
So on that south end one, that's one I had questions about because I remember when Director Todd was a council member, we discussed the sign that the state has that says, welcome to Mill Creek on the northbound lanes of five twenty-seven, which is actually several blocks south of the boundary of Mill Creek. So are we, is that one still there and are we proposing to add one at the actual boundary? So we'd have a state sign that says, welcome to Mill Creek, followed a couple blocks later by our signage?
I'm sure that'll be open for discussion.
So the one at the south end that you're talking about, we're going north on Bothell Everett Highway, the one that says, welcome to Mill Creek, is because the city limits include the state right-of-way at that point. So as far as the state's concerned, you're now in Mill Creek, and I think therefore the police department starts enforcing at that point. All the properties to the east of that are not in Mill Creek until you get to north of, it's essentially where Penny Creek has the undercrossing, north of Old Seattle Hill Road, north of the new apartments. And that's where the mayor's referring to as the city limits in terms of properties that are in Mill Creek.
So where would we, we'd be proposing to put it where the state sign is now?
That's gonna be open for discussion wherever right-of-way could work. I'm guessing nobody really knows the history as why it was removed and if we had the right-of-way there by the learning experience, why it went away. It takes some digging, but.
Okay, thanks.
But it was on the west side of the road, so it technically was where Mill Creek on the west side was in learning experience and then the nursery Wiley Wood at the time were in Mill Creek. So I think somebody's logic was put it there. And by inference, when you went past it the other direction, you were leaving Mill Creek.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Let's see, where were we? So we're still here. So anyway, this option would save the most money, keep us on brand, and create a new and refreshed look for the city. So then option two, and I've had, I have a few errors in this PowerPoint, and then one major error is that top yellow spot. That is incorrect. That's the one before you get to Fred Meyer. That needs to be the one to the left of it by McCollum Park. Yes, correct, right where the cursor is. So sorry about that, but that is where the one of the three larger signs would go. And so anyway, option two, same thing, clean and wrap five existing to brand. We don't have to remove anything, create anything, keep that on point. Then we'd fabricate an additional three larger signs at the major entryways. And luckily, these major entryways are all the ones that are either wood or missing. This example at the bottom is completely wrong. It was my, we didn't hire a designer. It was just me. So they'd be more vertical than horizontal, obviously. A lot of these locations where these signs can go in, the right-of-way space is pretty narrow, so it would be more of a vertical than a horizontal, but it would be a larger version of what we currently have. Does that make sense?
Yes, but I struggle with visualizing what it would look like. That's not my strong suit. So.
Yeah. So it's kind of how they did the Mill Creek Town Center. That's why we use this example. It kind of added on to it and made it larger and more monumental. So we'd do something similar to that with these other ones, just bigger, add a few. It would involve a designer. We're not quite sure where that would go, but but it would stick to the same design. It would look similar, just bigger.
Okay.
So then option three is reuse and add monument signs. So first part, same thing, clean and wrap the five existing and then fabricate an additional three larger signs that are completely different, a little more monumental. You know, maybe it's a big owl, maybe it's a big mill. We don't know, right? It's something else that we'd find a designer to help us with, but it would be much more monumental, wouldn't look similar to the other ones. And then that price, as you can see, it jumped. And as Martin pointed out, the the three larger signs at major entryways, that should say one thirty-seven five hundred. Thank you. That's how we got to the one fifty. And then the last option, which is option four, is scrap everything, remove all of those existing and add all new. So here's just some examples of some monumental type signage that other people around the area have created. This could be less than three fifty. It could be more. Unfortunately, our funding for the entire wayfinding project is three hundred, and that includes this welcome signage, the kiosk upgrades which are underway right now, and all the directional post upgrades which are still in planning phase. So it kind of goes way above and beyond our budget, but I know a few council members asked to have that included in there, so. Any questions?
I got one. I'd suggest an option five, which is a hybrid of one. Did we, I assume there's power close to the, in the right-of-ways there on one sixty-fourth and on five twenty-seven. Would it be cost prohibitive to light those three signs so they're backlit at night?
We'd light them up with solar. The technology for that is huge. All the new ones are all solar now.
Even better. Councilmember Cavalier.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Scott, for bringing this forward. We've talked about this for as long as I can remember, I think since as long as I've been on the council about doing this and and I think we've even put money in the biennial budgets. We've put it in, we take it out, put it in, take it out, and so we've gotten to this stage and I think it's, you don't have to be a detective to see that our signage looks awful. We've been talking about this for some time. I would like to see, I mean, I'm interested to hear what every council member says. I wouldn't mind something, you know, along the lines, like the mayor said, maybe a hybrid, two and three. Put together, I think the monument signs like you had on the three on the bottom seemed a bit excessive, you know, just seemed a bit a bit big. And I must admit that I did receive a bit of sticker shock when I saw the three fifty price tag, but I would remind everybody that we're using ARPA funds. So I mean, it's an opportunity to finally get this done once and for all and be creative about it. It's kind of our landscape to paint. Thanks.
Councilmember Steckler.
You know, it's interesting. When I hear councilmember Cavalier say, we put this in the budget and we take it out and we put it in the budget and then we take it out. That's not unheard of, and it's kind of realistic is when budgets get tight, let's just keep the signage we got. We're okay with it. We have been given a gift by the ARPA funds of a chance to do something with our signage, which is very poor. It's old. It's outdated. We have wood signs. My concern to wrapping wood signs is that the life expectancy of that sign. Would it be better just to replace it with a material that's a little bit more impervious? But before we go to the actual, we're talking about specific signs and utilization. I think we need to go back and talk a little bit about what is our mission here with the signage? What are we trying to do with it? Do we want to just upgrade the nasty-looking ones and get by? That's an option. Do we want to take advantage of this money and create some signage for our city? One thing I would, I think we've learned here is maybe it's better to stay away from the welcome to and just have, you know, Mill Creek, the signage, you know, that lets people know that they're coming into Mill Creek, because, yeah, boundaries change. But I think there's an opportunity here to give a gift back. It's my opinion. A gift back to the citizens in the city of Mill Creek. To give them something to empower them, make them feel good about living here. If you build a great sign that people can drive into, drive by every day when they come home from work or out and about, which makes them feel just a little bit better about living in Mill Creek and, you know, who we are, what kind of a city we are. And other cities have done this as well with their signage and with their positioning as to, you know, the Viking cat, the city of the Northwest or whatever. It means Edmonds is pursuing the arts right now. It was the art city of the Northwest. It gives the citizens in the community a chance to bond. So I think, my opinion is, I'm I'm in favor of doing something a little bit more with this ARPA funds and take our signage to the next level. I think we definitely need to light them, Mayor. I totally agree. There's a couple of them you couldn't see at sunset, let alone at dark. So I am in agreement with the, you know, monument signs going more vertical than horizontal because I don't have a problem with monument signs being overgrown by vegetation. And our Freedom Field Monument Sign is a good example of that. It's many times during the year, you can't even see the sign. So it's a challenge. I think we do need to get some height and we do need to get some presence. And I think I actually would like to see us invest in, you know, those signs at the end, they're not exactly the best examples of a positioning sign for a city, but they do bring back the message that some, sometimes it makes sense to build a signage to Mill Creek. It's not necessarily on the entrance to Mill Creek, but it seems they could be inside of Mill Creek, but it creates a pride. And that's what I'd like to see us do. We have HOAs in our area in the North End of Snohomish County that have better signage than Mill Creek because they invested in creating a pride when people come back into their area that they live in. And nothing could help us more than to strengthen the community and strengthen the citizenship, I think, than investing in the signage. So I think we need to understand exactly what we want the signage to accomplish, what the mission is, and then we could create the proper signage to accomplish that mission. Right now, these are some great examples, but I am in favor of the investment. Three hundred fifty doesn't scare me. I think with ARPA funds, this is something we will never, ever see again in our lifetime on the council to have that kind of money made available to us to actually improve our signage and to create a positioning for Mill Creek. So I'm in support of that. I'm in support of a stronger plan with a clearer mission for our signage.
Councilmember Allison.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess out of all of these options, option two is the one that I like the most. You know, putting a few larger signs at some of the places where we're missing signage altogether. As long as wrapping, cleaning and wrapping the five that exist, you know, like there's no damage to any of those and they're in good condition, right, that they're gonna have a life for years to come. And, yeah, I would like to see some lights on them too. You know, if that's accomplishable by, with solar, then great. It doesn't matter what kind of utilities we have available and but that would also add an element. I don't necessarily think we need to upgrade, you know, if those five that exist today are in good shape, I don't think we necessarily need to replace them. They serve their purpose now, even if they do need to be rewrapped and cleaned. So that's my humble opinion.
Real quick, I just want to clarify for councilmember Steckler, our budget for this that we had for the wayfinding project in a hole was three hundred thousand. We've already spent some money on the tertiary kiosks. Those are the kiosks at Freedom Field, Boston's, and LA Fitness. Those are being wrapped back to our brand and redone. So this is, I want to keep everybody to thinking that we want to stick to brand and with those brand colors, and that's why, you know, we have our staff choices that we want to move forward with, and I just want you to keep that in mind.
Before we get to Councilmember Paddock, can you just run through the four options again?
Yep. Okay. Option one, for eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, you'll get five wrapped. And councilmember Steckler, just to clarify, also, you mentioned us wrapping the wood signs. We are not wrapping wood signs. The wood signs go away and we create three new ones to replace them.
And the three new ones are on one sixty-fourth and on five twenty-seven at the north and south end.
And then Dumars or McCollum Park, that entrance.
Oh, that's, yeah, not the north end of five twenty-seven, but down by McCollum Park. Okay, thank you. And then option two.
Option two is reuse. So exactly the same as option one, except the three that we're creating are gonna be larger.
Got it.
A little more monumental.
Okay.
And similar. Option three, once again, same thing, except the three additional ones are gonna be something completely different.
Got it.
Try and stick to brand. Larger, larger, yeah, but still fit in the right-of-way. We have small spaces, right? Not really quite sure what that is, and we have to stick to our sign code. And then option four.
Okay.
Those.
Thank you for the refresher. Councilmember Paddock.
What on the, thank you for the presentation, by the way. The wrapping, does that, how long does that extend the life of those monuments? Are those pretty much gonna be around forever?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, they put a warranty on those for, gosh, five or ten years.
Okay, okay. And then why larger? Like aesthetically, is there a particular reason we want larger potentially or larger, larger?
Trying to give options. I know a lot of people for these major entryways, and like I said, it was just luck that the major entryways are the ones that are failing and very old and just make them larger and more obvious.
Okay. And then I thought when you kicked off, you said you would give some options and staff recommendations. Is there another slide behind the question?
With the staff recommendation, that was gonna come from the city manager, I believe.
Thanks, Councilmember Paddock. Yes, we actually, in the follow-up slide, we somewhere in there. somewhere in there, um, the staff actually is recommending options two or three. Um, given the balance between the cost and the need to, um, better brand, I think the city in a way that, uh, I think over time will resonate across, you know, not just our residents, but people come in the city as well. Um, there are various options with those monument signs that you could do as well. And I think um, it's not limited to what we see here on, on the screens, but, uh, the artist will be able to do almost anything we want. Um, we're thinking from the, from the monument side, if, if we did something that was outside the standard, um, design, like the other five smaller ones, um, the, the artist would be able to tie in something that would, uh, connect the city to some maybe remembrance of whether it be L's or Mills or something. So, um, those are just some examples of creating something outside, but we want something larger that would be memorable. Um, every time you drive in into the city, whether you're coming from north, south or, uh, from the west.
I know there was, it might've been that meeting you were at recently, people had talked about, you know, monumental signs. People go there to take selfies. Look, I'm in Mill Creek, whatever. And where our signs are currently located, it's dangerous to do that, right? It's not, it's not going to work. And thinking forward to the future, if and when the DRCC gets established, that's going to be the perfect location for something to go to where they can go safely. Take this picture, Ham and Mill Creek kind of thing.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I am actually in favor of option two, um, for all the reasons councilmember Allison said, um, as well, but, um, I just like that it's, it's clean. I like rebranding. So that all the colors are actually the same colors so that we're branding our colors of blue and green throughout. I'm assuming that's why you've got blue and green. So, so that'll coordinate throughout the city and, um, I, I do like the idea of having something slightly bigger at the major entryways so that you draw attention that you're actually entering in Mill Creek. And I don't think we need the bigger signs everywhere, but it makes sense at the main points. Um, and I do prefer something that's a little more sleek and modern. And I think, um, that look could still, still brands us and keeps us in, in line with that, um, thought. And, um, what I, I really want is one of, I, I really want a nice plain, like Mill Creek sign, like what you said. And so, um, that makes perfect sense to put something like that or at DRCC when we build that. Cause I do like when you go places. I know Bothell just got one to put in and I see people posting on Facebook all the time that their picture in front of the Bothell sign. Um, and I would love to find a place for something like that in Mill Creek. But that's not what we were discussing here. So with these directional signs, I think the most cost effective and best options, number two, and I, this is a personal preference. So I want to make that clear. I don't like the really tall, high signs. I don't think they look as expensive and sharp. And that's my personal opinion. So that's also why I'm going towards option two, because I, I prefer them not to be high up in the air. Cause we do have strict signage requirements here. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to live here. Um, so we, we don't, I, I'm just, I, I don't like them. So it's a personal preference. So I prefer option two because of that. So that's where I land.
One more addition. I also want to say the staff choice, we're saying that because these kiosks that we're wrapping, it's the same color theme. And then, um, if you guys know the directional posts, they're like throughout the city, sometimes they're hidden right now behind trees and things have overgrown. They're also on the traffic lights. Those are going to get rebranded and, um, wrapped as well to those same colors. So really hoping to tie everything in.
I like option two also, but I could be convinced of option three, but I don't know what bigger than big is, might be. And so I, I'd be open to the staff looking at what some options are to bring back to us. If there's something cool that I don't see, think any of the pictures we saw necessarily represent what I would want, but um, I'd like to see what some options are for, if we're, option two is bigger, big. What would bigger look like? Um, two other comments. I know we're, we're for one thirty-second Seattle Hill Road. The northeast corner, I'd love to see if we could put some kind of landscaping around the chain link fence right there behind what monument goes up there. So that when you see that entrance coming from Seattle Hill Road, you're not looking into a detention facility. And then this isn't really related to the monuments, but one thing I heard at the ribbon cutting for four stitches, making sure the wayfinding signs in the city to lead people to the area that many of us didn't know existed down on Ninth Avenue. So councilmember Duquesne?
I'm happy to go with the, um, wrapping the existing and then adding additional larger, not larger, larger signs. Um, uh, just a couple things to, to add in my, um, in my opinion, I'd love for it to not have fortieth anniversary. Obviously these are just mock-up sketches, but something to, to keep it consistent. Current signage has the lettering, I think, pop out like it's a little bit 3D. I see that that's, um, could be removed. So I think you're not potentially going to go in that direction, or maybe you are. But, um, I, I know on the backside of the one along one thirty-second by Bothell Everett Highway, I think the E is like missing or something like that. So that's um, something to think about. I'm assuming with the wrapping that, that's, um, considered easier for cleaning, right? In terms of graffiti. So, um, for anyone on, online, um, heads are being, are, are shaking correctly. My question is, um, in regards to the larger signs, the placement of them. Um, so as of right now, from my understanding, the way you said it, it was the one by McCollum Park. So coming, uh, on Dumas coming up.
Yep.
Right? So it's where the new transit, all the construction is happening. And then you're coming up, um, along, um, that way or the shortcut. Uh, as I think some of us call it, who go that way, um, instead. Then the other one is the word location is missing along Bothell Everett Highway along the south end.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other yellow dot is along one sixty-fourth.
Yes.
Um, hmm. I don't know if we need a fourth larger sign, but the space on Bothell Everett Highway on one thirty-second by Fred Meyer, that's a big corner. So if there were ever to be of any of those locations where there's a space for a large one, I would think it's there because that's a main arterial, um, just like the one coming south from Bothell Everett Highway. That's the biggest one. There seems to be a lot of uh, uh, junk, um, or things get left in that corner. So I could see that that would be one. I don't know if we can do four larger signs or just rethinking about the placement. I also had notes about lighting, if that was possible and landscaping. So, um, and really thinking through, how do we keep these areas so that it doesn't, um, they don't disappear? Um, or, or what do we need to do to make sure it stands out that this is nice manicured, well-kept Mill Creek in these areas? And again, I'm thinking of specifically Bothell Everett Highway near the Fred Meyer, um, in that corner. And then, um, same thing for the Seattle Hill Road. Um, and one thirty-second, that same thing that, that it's kind of just, um, a lost place. It doesn't, it doesn't feel that way. Then my additional question is the larger monument sign that says Mill Creek Town Center that has that similar branding and you alluded to it. Would that then, is that branded by us as a city? Cause that would have to change colors too. Cause that's the old branding colors, right?
Uh, Town Center owns that sign. I don't believe, I mean, we could probably work with them to change it, but.
Okay. So that, but, and they just branded it, uh, cause when, when places are looking for, uh, cause it looks just like our look. And then so if we're changing all of our colors and this is right in the center, um.
Historically, it was just the Town Center sign. Then after they were done, we brought in that Mill Creek thing and put it behind, right?
Ah.
So that, right, Mike? Yeah.
So maybe that might be the workaround is that.
The question is who owns it? I actually don't know.
Yeah, I think the original bars were Town Center. They were the blue long bars and then.
Yeah, yellow and a green.
Through some arrangement. I can't remember what the deal was there. But I think you're talking about, you would make that to blue, the blue and green colors.
That's what I'm asking. Yeah. So then, yeah, and I, I have a picture of it. That's why I, I'm, I'm thinking of it. Cause it's the purple now. So you're saying the welcome to Town Center is theirs, but that we put in the back. So as part of the wrapping, then we should potentially be considering that cost of that one as well. Have a head shake. Yes. And a pondering here. Right? Because it is our sign. It is our branding and we'd want it to match everything.
Yeah, I would assume we could make the deal with them again to make that match the brand.
Yeah, at least that back one, not their.
I think Scott's going, I don't think he put that in his price, but that's probably another, what? Twenty-five hundred bucks each to wrap those.
They're larger. It's probably be a little bit more, but yeah, around that.
And we don't have to wrap what it says, welcome to Town Center. That's a yellow and a green. If they want to keep their thing, it's just that big purple one that has the Mill Creek. And I think it's also that 3D that, um, the, the, the Mill Creek letters are out. So I just wanted to flag that. I was curious about what that would do. And then my last one is why do we not have one on the southernmost part along thirty-fifth?
So in two thousand and six, when this huge wayfinding project happened, um, they did a traffic study and that's how they, you know, chose these locations. I'm sure it's changed so much now and it might be time to do another traffic study to figure out where are the major flows. I mean, we all think Bothell Everett Highway, um, I five and probably from, from the east or, you know, I'm not quite sure, but that's probably where we do want to put in these larger ones. If that's the option we go for.
Yeah.
Um, and move an existing smaller one and, you know, just kind of shift things around.
Oh yeah. Like maybe if we did an extra larger one in the Bothell Everett, the Fred Meyer, the location I'm thinking about, maybe that one can move. Maybe we can find a location. It just, it seems interesting that in the map, there's nothing in that spot along thirty-fifth. And now the way four oh five traffic is and commuters and everyone coming up thirty-fifth. Um, especially with the, um, right of way construction that happens to the south of us. Seems to me it would need to be a spot. I assume there wasn't with the same issue, the way Bothell Everett Highway is where you're coming in on one direction. It's not right side. It's the left side. So I leave that to the professionals. I see again, not, um, head nodding, uh, that that probably is the case, but I would like to, you know, recommend that we think through, um, what can be done in that southern end, whether it is nice landscaping that just, you know, references the city. And those are all of my questions and comments.
Not one last question? Uh, regarding the fortieth anniversary, these will all be branded fortieth. If they just all come off on September thirtieth of next year. Just right off.
Councilmember Cavalieri?
Thanks, Mayor. Excuse me. Um, I'm open to, um, any option that the council desires. I think two or three gets us there. The, the only thing I worry about is that in listening to everybody's, um, desires up here. Landscaping, perhaps, uh, some lighting, uh, rock sculptures, other creative ideas. It's going to cost quite a bit more. So do by choosing option two, do we limit ourselves with this, uh, scope of funding here? That if we went with three or kind of a hybrid of three with the ideas of two, we, we secure the correct funding that we're hoping to spend and we're not having to dip into our pocket later. So just some ideas there.
Yeah, with, with option two, that, that gives us that padding. Absolutely. With the, the one thirty-two. Right? Cause we've got three hundred, we're probably going to spend twenty on some other projects. And then the rest of that money can go into, yeah, cleaning up the areas where these signs are going to go into for sure.
You're not looking for a formal vote. You're looking for consensus on direction of which option. And it's, if I'm hearing everyone correctly, it sounds like option two with possibly four larger signs, the one, three you've identified. The fourth being at five twenty-seven and one thirty-second, and then possibly a fifth on thirty-fifth. Um, and I'm hearing also that there may be some desire for some of those to at least consider what a big, bigger sign might look like. Um, am I hearing?
I don't want to.
No, 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 big, bigger. Just big.
For me, it's. I personally would like to see some examples, cause all we're doing right now is approving budgets. We don't really know what it's going to look like or what we're approving here. So um, till then I, I, I like to see the big, bigger and see what it looks like. Is it horrible or is it actually better? There isn't. There is a challenge with, with a low monument sign. Just that people brought that comment up. And, uh, there, there is a challenge with them getting, keeping them uncovered from foliage. And a great example of that is Freedom Field, which is a monument sign. It's a lower sign. And it's challenged many times through the year where you can't even see the, the sign at all because it's covered by foliage. Uh, and, you know, we need to get people in there to, you know, clean it out. And it's just on the schedule. So that's the challenge of lower signs. You do run the risk of losing them.
Well, just to be clear, I don't think we're approving budgets. We're approving options and staff has given us a ballpark of what those options might be. That's not holding tight to that. And it sounds like option two is kind of the preferred. We don't know what big looks like yet. And so direction is to have bigger signs of those three, possibly four, and maybe even a fifth location and come back to us with what those might look like. Am I reflecting it accurately? John, are you in agreement with what I just said?
I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement actually with two or three. Uh, again, I, I'd like to see what we're talking about and then, then we can decide what makes the most sense of, of the funds.
Yeah, I think we're saying the same thing. We don't know what big means yet.
Right. Correct.
Bigger or the same thing or not. So we're talking in the abstract.
And that will certainly delay finding a designer to, to do this work and come up with these designs, but we'll, we'll try and.
What, what would delay?
I'm sorry?
What would delay?
The, the moving forward, right? So we're ready to take action on any of these, but for figuring out what bigger is, which was option three, I believe. We'll have to find a, a contractor to, you know, come up with some of these designs.
No, I, I don't, I don't think that's what we're hearing. I think we're just saying that what, we don't know what under option two, what bigger is. It's just the signs we showed, but a larger size, or is it somewhat a different design? For the, for the three, four or five bigger, big signs.
I understand.
Does it make sense?
Okay. City manager, or are we under a time crunch for monies here for, for getting this project going?
The intent was actually to try to get something to move forward at this point, but I think it would be prudent of us to slow it down a little bit and, and bring back some more specific examples of what big and bigger would look like. So, um, e- even we could get a little creative too, if you wanted to. There might be some other examples that because those are the ones that we saw were kind of representative of kind of what we're thinking initially in terms of, uh, um, the monument related ones. But I think between two and three, we can try to bring something back in a few weeks. We have a that sound good?
Yeah.
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 Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think we have a majority in favor of going with option two. We just didn't understand what the bigger one was going to look like. But that doesn't mean that we need to delay or pause or wait. So I feel like we do have a, a majority in favor of option two. And if we need to vote to clarify that, then, then I say we do so.
I think that's what we've been saying all along, option two. Councilmember Duquesne, did you have another comment?
No, that was it. I just wanted to, it was what city management, we, we want you to move forward. It just, you didn't give us what option two, the, uh, the larger sign looks like. So.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Well, did we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve design option two related to wayfinding signage in the city.
Second.
Any further discussion? Can you take the, put the gallery up so I can see, John? And we can see and any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
That, that was an I in favor of the motion, John?
As an I in favor of opposed, I'm not, I, I'm not, I, I don't want to just go ahead blindly with number two.
That'd be a nay.
Oh, sorry. My nay.
Um, thank you. Um, city manager, finance director, can we clarify one thing with the ARPA funds? Does it have to be spent or allocated? My understanding is we have to allocate it by adoption of a formal action, but that doesn't necessarily mean spending it, which is why we've been bringing these ordinances to council. Once we've solidified how we want to spend the money where we're authorizing and allocating those ARPA funds. Is that correct?
Per contract or encumbered, if, uh, if finance director could correct me if I'm wrong, uh, by the end of twenty, uh, twenty-four. And spent by the end of twenty twenty-six.
But, okay. So there is a spending little horizon where it has to be spent by, but we have to make a decision to allocate it for a specific use and then spend it by the end of twenty twenty-six.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Are we done with that item? Uh, so, police chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tim, council, I come to you tonight with a little bit of request for a little housekeeping. Um, on September twelfth of this year, we addressed a UAS resolution. Um, we have identified some other options through that, uh, purchasing. So we are asking that we rescind resolution twenty twenty-three, six, eight, eight. And have it replaced with the resolution that's in your packet, which actually identifies a new vendor, a vendor which was identified through.
which actually identifies a new vendor, a vendor which was identified through Sourcewell, which is a um, interlocal purchasing program that we adopted as council, you adopted as council in March of this year. Uh, that is the same uh, ILA, ILP that we utilize for the security system as well. So by utilizing that ILA, we are more in line with the federal regulations regarding the use of ARPA funding. So I believe I have a, a, a motion that Adrian will put on the screen. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those before we can move forward.
Do we have any questions? Um, I can't see John. Um, John, do you have any questions? No, okay, no questions. Okay. Oh, councilmember Duque.
It's the same amount, though.
Correct. It'll still be for the same amount.
Thank you.
All right, chief.
And the proposed motion is there.
We have enough to make a motion. Do you want me to make that or you want to wait for the mayor to come back?
No, I think you're fine.
Thank you. Uh, I'll make a motion to rescind resolution two zero two three dash six, eight, eight, and auth- authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the purchase of two small area system platforms and associated training and software from Remus LLC, and to appropriate an amount of up to thirty five thousand of the city's funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA.
And if, and if I may interrupt, councilmember, I apologize for that. There is a scripter's error on that resolu- on that motion. It should be three, not two. So I, I guess we would need a change in, in that motion.
Which number?
It's three platforms rather than two.
Got it. Um, with the chief's comments there, I'll make that change.
Second. Is there any discussion? Can you move the screen down? I can't see John. Oh, there's John. Uh, here are no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, item D, again, missing middle. Put this on the agenda because councilmember Cavalry raised in his report last week. Think it was four weeks ago, we had a, spent some time discussing the missing middle study that was up on our website. Um, in response to the public comments we received, we put some clarification on the uh, public portal about the study and what it reflected and what it does not reflect. Um, I think councilmember Cavalry heard from one of the affected property owners. They thought it should be taken down. I've heard from one of the affected property owners and talked with others who think that out of transparency, we should leave it up with the clarification we provided. Um, so I wanted to throw it open for discussion at the council, whether or not we leave that study up with the clarification that's there or whether we take down the reference to the study altogether. So with that, the floor is open. Councilmember Cavalry.
Not going to wait for me to hit my button.
No, I say.
So I have teetered back and forth with this here. Take it up, take it down, leave it up. As of three thirty today, I've heard from another citizen who says for transparency reasons, it should stay up. So um, it seems like a fifty fifty split from the four, this now the fifth person that I've, I've spoken to. My concerns are this. I understand transparency. We should have a, have um, full transparency at all times. A quick example, if we had put a map on the city's website that was incorrect and we took it back down, would that, would that ma- and put the right one back up subsequent to that? Would both maps need to be up there or just taking the one down be sufficient? And I mentioned that because I think there's a workaround here that, that it's very easily, that if it would make some folks sleep better at night, knowing that their address wasn't up for public consumption, that we could either put a footnote at the bottom of the page that a map is available upon proper public disclosure request. Or perhaps even like they do in the movies when they want to blot out the, the state's witness or something like that. And just, we, we don't see the actual physical numbers on the address. And the point I'm trying to make is that I, I think there's a workaround here. And I know the city attorney i- is listening. Um, I'd be interested to see um, what his thoughts were um, on the, with rules of disclosure and, and also citizens' rights to privacy.
Before we hear from the city attorney, we need to clarify something. Did we publish any addresses? Those were, the addresses, I believe, were published by the residents who scheduled the public meeting. There was nothing on the city's website to publicize any of the addresses.
Then I stand corrected on that fact.
I'm sorry?
Can we pull that map up? Adrian, if you want to just go to the top bar and search for middle housing, it'll be one of the first hits.
Yeah, that we.
And then I think, and then you go to the story map at the bottom of that page. The, the trick, I'll fill in. The trick is if you zoom far enough in any map and you're clever, you can figure out which property that is.
Sure, but we, we did not put any addresses on the portal with, along with that map, just to clarify.
So Adrian, you hit the update. I think if you go back up and hit the one that was just the regular middle housing, apologize, the second one there, if you hit that, then at the bottom of that page is, I think.
Yes, the story map link.
Story map?
Yeah.
Because it's an RGIS product that's on a different website. So as you scroll down, you'll get to the point where the map appears on the right hand side. So and if you now put your cursor over that and scroll into the, zoom into that, I think up and there you go. So you can see the pink boxes.
Not, yeah, not the green, but yeah, those.
That's, that's a very large lot. You can see that was at the end of the cul-de-sac. So it happens to be extraordinarily large lot. So that qualified under the criteria that less than twenty percent of that lot was covered by a building.
Yeah, but so there's, there's no addresses that were posted. There, there is the map, but that's available on any county or website as well.
Yeah, that, that one's in Holly.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure we're.
I agree.
All understand.
And, and to Director Todd's point that um, anybody with a little bit of savvy or a, or a zoom button could kind of figure out which home it is in any different neighborhood.
Other thoughts, comments? Councilmember Allison?
Well, could we, could we look at what that website says today? Because the the, the language on it was updated after our last discussion.
Yes, go, could you pull that back up? He scrolled through it when he was scrolling down to find that link to the map. Is, there is a September eighth update. If you go back one page. Yep, there it is, right there. And. Councilmember, why everyone's reading? Councilmember Duque, did you have a comment?
I did, because I saw that the um, updated language is on that page, but on the actual uh, uh, is it ArcGIS? What, what, whatever, ArcGIS? ArcGIS, thank you. You never know when things are combined or not. On that page, it just has pink outline, may have the capacity to provide opportunities for middle housing in the future, which I personally think that language was pretty straightforward and fine, but obviously it has not been for many. So um, I, I guess I'm a supporter of this page should not go away because it still serves the purpose of the survey itself. And this is what we were doing. And we were looking at where were the opportunities. However, this also was created and provided before there were limitations put on by House Bill. Um, I'm intent. And so maybe that language is, needs to be updated here directly on this page where it says pink outline. It could say may have the capacity to provide opportunities for middle, middle housing in the future. So I guess my suggestion would be maybe the houses that are no longer opportunities for middle housing because they're in HOAs, then there are no, we remove the pink outline because that's been updated and the line says that one option, or the other is the land, uh, we can add a sentence saying as of, and then put the date of when House Bill, you know, approved, these, you know, properties are no longer um, uh, or whatever that technical language, I'm not about to put language on that I'm not familiar, but I would say it would be here on this page is where that update should be made because this is where the content is, however that looks. Um, and that's my thoughts.
Can you get to the map on the portal without going through the update that has been posted? You can?
Maybe. Like, I think Adrian, there is that page, I think if you clicks on story map there, it is, the map is there. That's a static version.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm inclined to leave it up because I'm afraid that if we take it down, we're going to start hearing, oh, they just hit it. They're still planning to do this. Um, but I think I'd, I'd ask staff to see if there's any way, because it is clearly marked when you go onto the missing middle page. It's the first thing that comes up. But I think we should have where there's any link to the map that it comes up again. Uh, the update pops up again so that they can't view that map independently without seeing the update first. So if it is, if there is a building on the website to get into the map without getting to the update, is there a way staff can explore to see if we can?
We may have to enter into new contact with LDC because we don't have the keys to this. We don't have RGIS capability ourselves.
Well, I, I guess what, so like, scroll, Adrian, scroll down to where the story map is. So if someone goes in the missing middle housing or goes into the link, you, we had, before you had a screen that showed a vertical column of links you could hit, click on.
Yeah, you click, that's the very bottom link. So like there, Adrian, that's a static picture. And if you click at the bottom, that's where it goes to the story map.
Correct. So, okay, so if, so this is the way a resident could go. If you get there, you get to the, there's the update. That's on the story map link. So where is the path that you could get to the map without seeing the update?
I don't know that there is one, but I've not checked.
Okay, I mean, because I think that's the, we need to have staff verify whether or not there's a way to get to the map without seeing that update come up. So.
That was our intent, was to make sure you had to go through that.
Yes.
We had explicit discussion about not changing the content of the page itself. And it also is a little bit of problem. We can make a general statement about House Bill eleven ten had some exceptions for certain HOAs that already had rules in place. But for us to go and delineate which HOAs that is also a project.
No, that's, that's, I don't think that's what we're suggesting. We're just making sure that so go, what, uh, so when you click on the third link, yes. So is there a way to incorporate into that the update? Because that's what gets you to the map. Someone could go through there without. It's right where.
So I'm wondering if the disconnect is because this went to the public works planning middle housing page, when the other update is on the communications page. So it's totally separate page, like a so when I click on this one, this is the commu- communication, the marketing. I don't know if that's the.
Well, we're not going to resolve this tonight. I think what I'm hearing from council is let's find a way to make sure that whenever someone gets to that map, if there's a way to trigger that they see the update first is what I think is everyone's wanting to see.
Yeah, yeah.
Am I stating that accurately?
I think that's clear. And I think Scott Harder is the guy who can do a lot of stuff on our webpage. And I see him making funny signs back there. I think we can accomplish that. We just need to look at all the different paths.
Yeah, we're not going to resolve it tonight. So.
Were, were we going to hear from the city attorney?
Uh, what do you want to hear from them?
I just wanted to hear, I, I mean, we've been talking about transparency and, and I agree with that. That if there was a workaround that, that the map could be just turned into a link or, or an attachment to the page where they just simply weren't up there uh, for public view without violating any sort of um, public disclosure acts.
I don't, councilmember, um, I don't think there's a public disclosure issue. I think, you know, there's obviously an interest by the council in transparency. What this, what this provides is data. Um, and it provides data on the size of certain uh, of, of certain lots uh, within a subset of the city. So I think that uh, from a legal perspective, I don't think there's anything that's leading there. Uh, it is just, it's raw information. I think the clarification uh, that council wants to have on there to, to make sure that uh, that anybody using the information understands the status of the, of the, of where the law is in the state of Washington now and what the city's obligations are going forward will be helpful. But I don't think that there's a, a public disclosure issue uh, embedded in this map.
So, so, so if it were taken down, it, we wouldn't be violating any rules of transparency um, that were obligated. And to take it even a step further, since these properties are no longer um, applicable for eleven ten at this point, then having these, these locations circled or earmarked is no longer germane to eleven ten. So there's, there's no reason to have it up there at this point, except just because that it was up there before.
There's a complication with that, though. The map doesn't just show nineteen properties in the MCCA, which would be precluded under eleven ten. It shows other properties outside of MCCA that may not have adopted restrictions. So you can't just take it down because there's some information that's still potentially relevant.
Yeah, and I think when we, first of all, I want to say I think it's, it's really sad that we had to have someone write a letter in that said how worried they were about their property. You know, our job is to, I think, inform, present, prevent, present facts, try to calm the public with what's really happening. And the parts that's, that's really kind of the salt in the wound is when we pass this motion, which councilmember Cavalry sponsored, it was specifically for this map, was specifically to inform our community. And it's turned into a scare piece by people. If we take it down, it's like we're buying into that fear. All it's for, which is, whi- which was in the motion to approve this, was to let the community know what areas were available per the zoning laws. That's all, that's all it's there for. When we eat from this, from this dais, use words like carving out and earmarking, that says we're going to do something to you. We need to clean up our language so that we don't scare our citizens. And that's what's happened.
Councilmember Duque.
I, I want to apologize to our communications team. I looked at the different ways that I accessed the information. And on both different pages, there was um, an update, different, one, the public plan, um, the one on the, on the page that you guys had put up with the, the green font, and then also on the other way. So I just looked at my three. And um, there is, there is a note um, on each one that clarifies that there was an update. So I wanted to acknowledge that uh, communication staff did, did do it. And I, um, you know, user error when reviewing, didn't see um, each page. So it is, um, there is updates on each of those pages. And thank you to the communications team for being on top of it.
Councilor Allison.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to see it removed because the truth is the state is trying to take away our rights to plan within our own city limits. Um, and that's the, that's the truth, right? House Bill one, 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 zero, actually, there were changes made to um, allow HOAs that already had rules, you know, to maintain their anonymity. That was, that was pressure to the legislature to let existing um, formalities exist, right? Leave them alone. Um, this isn't going to be the end of it. Um, and um, it would be easier with, now that that note is on there, for me to explain to people exactly what the history has been. So I don't necessarily want it to come off. I, I do feel for the people that have their, you know, their house drawn with a pink line around it when they're no longer in the current bill, no longer obli- you know, no longer part of the equation. I, I really feel for them, but it's like a snapshot in time. That's what it, that's what it was trying to do. That's what the study was about. So um, I, I think it allows us to tell a better story by leaving it up there if we have the right notes on the right pages. So I thought I saw one page that showed not the actual link to the map, but a representation of the map that didn't have the note on there. But if Melissa can verify that she found it, then I'm okay. I just, I want to make sure that note is on every single instance, even if it's just a snapshot of the map. Um, because uh, otherwise I don't think, I don't feel like we're being transparent with the citizen tree.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, ever since we started talking about this, I've actually went back and forth on this. Um, and, and changed my mind. and changed my mind often. I think for me, I've had some concern, and the reason why I'm leaning towards leaving it up is because of the transparency, because I am concerned that if we take it down, then it creates more drama to come, come more people to say that we're up to things, we're, we have conspiracies. And for me, I'm actually more concerned about the houses represented around the pink lines instead of the ones inside, the pink lines, because and I'm looking at this from a perspective that if I were looking to buy a home and it was going to be next to something that not in the HOA area now, but that could possibly be looked at to change. And I bought my home and the map had been taken down, I would be really angry. Because that map had been taken down. I didn't know that when I bought my home. So, because the people that are in pink lines in areas that are not in HOA, they, they would be able to make a choice whether or not to sell or not. They don't want to, they stay. But the people around them would have to be, wouldn't have that choice. So I feel very strongly that we need the map to stay up there because I, I would be really upset if I were to go and it had been taken down. So I think it's very important that since it's there now that we do, we have put up these updates so that everybody knows that it is not that the HOAs are not part of this so that everybody can go on there and see what's actually happened. And it does bring them to the history. And like Councilmember Allison said, that we actually, as a council, pushed back against the law from the state and we actually got changes made and the association fought, fought back against this and made plans to take care of everyone and, and got changes made. So I think I'm going to settle on the idea that we need to keep it up here to be transparent because transparency is really important so that we can have people trust us and believe in us. And if we go and take it down, then it looks like we're up to something, in my opinion. So I, I'm going to lean to, to keep it there with the, the new language. So, thank you.
Councilmember Cavalry, we started with you.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll be brief, as I usually am. So as I stated, I just received another text before the meeting, an hour and a half, so before the meeting stating, leave it up. And I'm happy to share that as well. But we also heard from the citizen who sent the letter in, who is one of those, you may not like the word earmark, but it is on the map. The property is earmarked for future expansion per this study. So for full disclosure, that's what it was. We can't be dismissive of these people's fears or their, or even their feelings on the matter. I, I don't think being dismissive or thinking that, that maybe they don't have all the facts is, is appropriate. I think it's, it's time for us to be sympathetic. I appreciated certainly having the discussion up here. And as I stated at the very beginning, I waffled back and forth on it. I'm not sure exactly how I feel about it. I know this for a fact. I wouldn't want my home to be circled on there. And, and I would leave everybody with this. I'm sure you wouldn't want yours on there either. Thanks.
So I think we have a consensus to leave it up. I would encourage people to, if questions come up, to let people know it is a study by a consultant. It is not a map that reflects any decision by this council, which is the only thing that can change what happens to people's property. So with that, I think that horse is dead for now. So we'll move on to new business and talk fire inspection fees. And thank you for the patience of the representatives from South County with us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Brotem and council for hearing us tonight. I don't say a few introductory words. We do want to recognize that Todd Anderson and Jarrett Bosberg are here from South County Fire. They're both involved in the Fire Marshal's Office. So here to support us if there's questions, but also we really, really respect and, and are pleased with the kind of work we're getting out of this relationship with South County Fire in terms of the new things they're finding in our cities that I had no idea were issues. So we're doing some great work. You may remember back during the annexation discussions, when we annexed, when the citizens annexed into South County Fire, we made an explicit discussion about two things that remained in our bill that we would pay out of city funds. And one of them was for the payments on the fire station. And the second part of it was a fire marshal contract. That's what we're talking about tonight is how we get some revenue back for that fire marshal contract. You may wonder why that's separate. And really, if you think about it, it's South County Fire has unincorporated areas and they have incorporated areas. In the unincorporated part of the county, the county is the fire marshal. But since we're a city, we don't, did not have a fire marshal. So we chose to contract with South County Fire to do that. And our contract, I think, extends for three years. We could choose to choose somebody else in the future. We could choose to do that ourselves, but it's advantageous for us right now because they're the experts. They're doing a great job to have that contract in place. We thought we'd look to see what the other cities within South County Fire were doing. And it turns out that Linwood and Linwood is being part of South County Fire, and then Edmonds, Motley Terrace, and Breyers being contract cities also don't have a way to really do this. Nobody's charging for it. So that's what Justin spent a bunch of time trying to figure out who is doing this and how they're doing it. And what he's presenting tonight is an approach we think sets us up for charging for those fees. Then he'll come back in a couple of weeks with a specific proposal. And with that, I'll let Justin take the way. Thanks.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Ten, council members. So as Mike mentioned, today I'm going to be talking about an ordinance steps proposed concerning fire marshal service fees. First, a bit of background. What does the fire marshal actually do? In our contract with South County Fire, there are four things fire marshals responsible for. And those are planner view, fire inspections, fire code enforcement, and general fire prevention management. We actually have Jared Bosberg here. He's our, does most of that work for the city. Doing a great job. It's a pleasure working with him. As Mike already mentioned, when we switched from Surfer to South County Fire, we started paying the fire marshal fees directly out of the general fund rather than being wrapped up into one contract that was a surfer. So the city is currently paying about a hundred forty six thousand dollars per year for those fire marshal services. And some of those, some of that cost is covered by fees we already have implemented. The special fire code offers the city to charge for permit fees for fire permits. So you're installing a fire alarm or fire sprinkler or something of that nature. And this year we've collected about sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars in fire permit fees. And in past years, it ranges typically between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars a year. So it's a piece of that hundred forty thousand, but a small piece. Now, there are other revenue sources available. A number of other nearby jurisdictions do charge for fire safety inspections. What is a fire safety inspection? It's when the fire marshal conducts an inspection of businesses, commercial businesses, to make sure they're complying with the IFC. Things they look for include, are there fire exits? Are fire exits blocked? Are the fire exit signs lit? Are they putting, are people using extension cords as permanent cords? Are they storing hazardous materials? Basically making sure everything complies with fire code and it's safe. Fire, it's not going to be, you know, minimized damage. Other jurisdictions have started charging these inspections, such as Everett started several years ago, the county charges for its inspections, Lake Stevens charges, Bellevue charges, I know cities do. In South County Fire, only the county charges. Other cities in South County Fire are not charging, but they are looking to potentially charge for these inspections in the future. And the fees are typically calculated based on two things, the building square footage and the occupancy type. And that's in an effort to make sure that the, the, the length of the inspection correlates to the charge. So like a restaurant is more dangerous than safe architectural office. So the fees typically higher for that kind of business. So while we propose this ordinance, in our city code, we currently do not have a mechanism that allows us to charge these fees. And so we need to amend the city code to allow us to charge. The ordinance would also clarify the duties of the fire marshal and the authority of the city to contract out our fire marshal services, which isn't explicitly in the code yet. So it'd be nice to get that out and clear. All right. So next steps, if we adopt the ordinance, staff return a later date with a resolution which will establish the fee rates. Our, our working idea is that we would establish this not in code as an ordinance every year, but as a, an annual resolution. So at the beginning of the year, we would come with a resolution saying, here's the fire inspection fees are currently, here's what they need to be for the next year to make sure we're recovering, recovering our costs. Which we'd also like to do for other fees as well, all our fire fees. Annually, the resolution every year, here's what they are, it should be next year to make sure we're keeping up with the cost of our services. And the thing we're working on is developing a method that will allow us to collect the fees. Right now, we don't have a a payment processing system that would allow us to actually allow people to swipe their credit cards, you know, when they need to pay the fee, when they have an inspection. So we're working with South County Fire. They actually have a software they use called First Do. And First Do has a module that allows for a fee collection. And so that would allow us to actually collect the money that we need to be collecting. We talked a lot about different ways we could do it right now without using First Do. We'd be sending out by hand invoices and hoping that people pay by check or cash, which would not be ideal. It'll take a lot of staff time. So fortunately, First Do is it's, it will be a good option. I'm working now with Todd Anderson over here from South County Fire to get it implemented. And we hope to have that ready in three months. All right. Any questions?
Thank you, Justin. Any questions? Councilmember Ellison.
Yeah, so in this paradigm, it's only our fire marshal that would be able to, you know, our contracted entity that would be able to perform that inspection service. But are there other entities that offer that kind of service? You know, could, could we potentially wind up with a business owner that says, oh, you know, your, your fee is higher. I could just go get my inspection done by this other entity and it's twenty percent less?
Great question. I had not considered that before. I doubt that our fees are going to be more than a private contractor would be. But we, we have discretion with those fee levels. Right now, we're trying to balance cost recovery with being in line with other jurisdictions are charging. So we're looking at what other local jurisdictions are charging and trying to make it in line with that, while also trying to recover the costs we have. Since Todd Anderson, South County Fire.
Todd Anderson, South County, South County Fire. Sorry about that. Right now, having authority of jurisdiction and having a contract that is basically set by all of you already having jurisdiction. So no private company could come in and subjugate that. So that would be up to the city council and your governance to decide.
And I don't think there's anyone out there offering those services in the marketplace anyway. Other questions? Councilmember Cavalry, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mayor. First things before I ask a question, kudos, Director Todd. You estimated this two years ago at a hundred and forty thousand a year for services, I believe. And here we are, what, one forty six?
I think that's the number they told us from the start. So you can credit that to.
All right. Credit to all of you because that's pretty darn good. So I, I noticed that this, this new, new office technically comes within the city. So will we be looking for additional staffing? It's, I see it goes through the public works department.
Great question. So no additional staffing. Is it just codifying what we already have? So it's establishing the office and then giving the city manager and the council the authority designate a fire marshal, and we have designated South County Fire as our marshal.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember TK.
What's the type of communication we should be having with local businesses? In regards to this, like, do you have any, like, I'll pause.
Yeah, so many businesses will be familiar with these inspections. Well, definitely inspections have been happening and other jurisdictions are charging. Some do, some don't. We plan on sending out a mailer to businesses before we put up the fees so they know that they're coming and making sure that it's very transparent that the fees are coming. Here's why we're charging them. And here's what the rates will be.
That's, that's great. Could we also get a copy of whatever that mailer is or whatever that language is as we talk to people or as we talk to business owners as part of the chamber and things like that? If you don't mind sharing that messaging. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some random questions. How often are we actually going in and inspecting different businesses currently?
Great question. It depends the kind of business. Typically, these range between one and three years. One year for high-risk businesses like restaurants or things that sort of has materials. And two to three years for less hazardous areas like a, like a multifamily building may be inspected less often than a commercial businesses. So one to three years is how I think.
What, what is that trigger? I mean, the plan review is obvious. When a plan comes in, you review the building permit or the site plan or the T I M plan, but for annual, are there annual inspections for businesses? What's there, can someone educate us on the requirement?
Depending on type of occupancy, restaurants take, for example, you would be annual. And it's just a date that auto-populates with us that we know. You have about six hundred and fifteen current businesses, I believe, that are scheduled for annuals.
So is that set by the requirement of the fire code that we've adopted?
The IFC.
Okay, yeah, sure. We've adopted this, I have international fire code is our, kind of the equivalent of a building code. That tells them when they have to do their inspections.
All right, thank you. I, I was curious because I used, I used to, when I was a property manager in North Carolina, before I moved here, that was one of the things I had to do is go around with the fire marshal. And it was usually yearly, even for our condo buildings and apartment buildings. So that's, that's why I was curious how often we go down, go. And also, I was, I was used to to charging fees for the service of when they would go. So thank you for answering that question.
Councilmember Fattick.
I think I, I think I heard this already, but it's, it would just be a pure pass through. There's not some sort of burden or uplift put on it.
Yeah, it's a pure pass through.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cavalry.
Yeah, just real quick, last question. So with our fire, fire marshal services, let's say we have a fire in an apartment building that's suspicious. Do they do the arson investigation as well?
That's correct. We do cause and origin, and then anything criminal, we would tie in with the local PD.
Okay, so I would just ask, does that need to be codified in the language?
In other words, are you asking, is that part of the fee schedule? Is it?
Correct. Investigations are not part of a fee schedule.
The fees that is proposing would be for only if annual fire safety inspections, not an investigation after an arson or a fire. The prevent, it's for these preventative inspections.
Okay, and I'll chime in. I don't think you found when you looked at Stormish County or Everett or other places, they aren't typically charging for an investigation. I guess it's one of the things we bear as a cost of having a fire. And we're interested to know what's, what's going on rather than charging the owner for why the fire happened and his establishment, I guess, is probably the logic. I'm seeing Jared and Todd running. That's correct. I mean, that's been our standard practice. If you look at different entities out there, Puget Sound Fire Authority, different entities around of our size, there are all kinds of fees as well as fines. Some have twenty-four hour investigators on where they're able to go and actually check occupancies at night to see, make sure they're not locking their exit doors and other safety hazards like that. And that could incur fines as well. Multiple trips of alarms, some agencies, after you get past three trips of an alarm, they've obviously refused to do nothing about it or seek maintenance opportunities. Then they incur a fine from that as well. We, we have opted not to go down that road yet. And you're the authority having jurisdiction. So that is a possibility in the future, really something that we would discuss with your, with your staff.
So the hundred forty six thousand is the total cost we've paid for fire marshal services for plan review inspections and investigations. And so this fee schedule would set up a mechanism to try to offset our actual costs for the plan reviews and the inspections. There's an element of that one forty six that would not be recovered by the fees. Other questions? John, did you have anything? Okay. Thank you. So we'll look forward to the ordinance in the coming weeks.
That's right. Next week, we bring the, the.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, that brings us to our study session on the mid, mid buying and budget discussion.
Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
You might need to get a decent, oh, you.
Yes.
That's better.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, council staff, and to the audience here at council chambers and also those joining us virtually. Um, tonight um, is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four mid-biennium budget review and um, discussion. And I would like to first acknowledge staff um, and for, for their time and for their um, input in um, providing um, valuable, valuable information to inform the preliminary um, projections for twenty-three, twenty-four. As well as the finance committee that have reviewed the budget modifications that are being proposed tonight. So for the um, discussion, um, tonight I'll go over the timeline and then the background. A little bit of the background, um, the forecast of revenues and expenditures and the proposed budget modifications relating to those. And then we'll open it up for questions and discussions. For our timeline tonight, um, October the third is the uh, study session for the mid-biennium review. On October tenth, there will be a, another study session um, covering the twenty twenty-four um, property tax revenue and the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight capital improvement plan amendment. On October twenty-fourth will be the first public hearing for the mid-biennium modifications, the twenty twenty-four property tax revenue and the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-eight C I P amendment. And then on November seven, we will be having the um, final public hearing and ordinances relating to the three items for the twenty twenty-four property tax revenue, the mid-biennium um, modifications and the twenty twenty-three to thirty, twenty twenty-eight C I P uh, amendment. And then we have to provide the certification of the property tax levy to the Snohomish County um, assessor's office by November thirty. And by November, by um, December thirty, we would implement the approved budget modifications into our financial system. Um, for our background, R C W thirty-five A dot thirty-four dot one thirty and the um, Mill Creek Municipal Code three dot zero-two dot zero-six-zero prescribe the timing manner by which the budget review and modifications of the fiscal biennium budget shall be conducted and authorized. And this process shall occur no sooner than eight months after the start and no later than the conclusion of the first year of the fiscal biennium. On um, November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two, this council approved ordinance number twenty twenty-two eight-eight-six, adopting the twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget. Which includes revenues of thirty-four point four million and expenditures, so forty-one point six million. Um, this uh, adopted budget reflects the fire and E N S annexation to the South County Fire. And it also incorporated um, council priorities as follows. Focus on clean, safe and well-maintained city, emphasis on rebuilding after COVID. Um, we will keep the property taxes flat and generate additional revenue for additional needs. Cost management, hold expenses and improve our service levels. Uh, try to uh, resume pre-COVID C operation levels, uh, either expand or increase recreation programs. Passport revenue, more enforcement services, city ma, maintenance operations and also evaluate the capacity needs and citywide staffing. Um, since then, certain assumptions have changed. Uh, our economic indicators are now very, very different. For instance, our, our um, consumer price index um, in December of twenty twenty-two uh, was at six point four percent. That's the national average and Seattle was at eight point four at that time. Um, last August, the C P I in the national, um, the national average is at three point seven and the Seattle has Seattle metro area has gone down to five point four. Also, our federal funds rate has increased by at least uh, one hundred basis points. In December of twenty twenty-two, it was at four point five percent. As of last month, it's at five point five percent. Also, you will see that our um, retail gas has also gone up. Uh, in twenty twenty-one, it was at three dollar forty-four cents a gallon. Um, twenty twenty-two, it was at five point fifty-seven and the average prices now is at four point uh, forty-eight. So all those um, for uh, in addition to, excuse me, let me go back to this. In addition to the economic indicators, the state also passed um, its twenty-three, twenty-five budget, which includes some allocations for the city of Mill Creek. And city council in the last nine months have adopted several resolutions where uh, we've deferred budget amendments that relate to them. And we've also gotten a notification from our contracts and our consultants of rate increases upcoming in twenty twenty-four, and our staffing levels have also improved. So we've um, incorporated all of those assumptions into the forecast for tonight, and I'll try to be sure um, to keep it high level um, and informative as much as possible. So please bear with me. Okay, so moving on to our forecast, this relates to attachment one of your um, packet tonight. The general fund revenue is projected to come up to um, twenty-three, almost twenty-four million in twenty twenty-four. Um, and it will exceed our budget by half a million or two point two percent. The property taxes, regular property taxes, this excludes, of course, the fire and E N S. Um, we have, you approved it for twenty twenty-three at four point two million. And we're projecting another four point two million in twenty twenty-four, plus a little bit of about seventy thousand for new constructions and refunds. That's preliminary, of course. Um, and then um, the sales tax and sales and news tax, we are projecting that it will go up by about four, two point four percent based on the state's um, projections right now. So at the end of the year, that would be about nine point three million. Our licenses and permits is going to be about one point one million. It will be um, it will have a shortfall of about two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Our um, development um, activities have slowed, and so the building permits, majority of the um, unfavorable unfavorable var, variants that you're seeing in the licenses and permits relate to the building permits. Um, it was budgeted at five point five hundred and fifty thousand. We are only expecting to um, come up to two hundred and eighty-five. The next revenue line is our intergovernmental revenues. Um, this makes up the grants that we received from the um, Department of Commerce. We have, we received two G M A um, grants, one for middle housing and one for the comp plan update. We also have um, slight increases in several state shared revenues, for instance, the P U D privileged tax. Um, the liquor excise tax, the liquor board profits and the municipal criminal justice assistance account, which is distributed on our capital basis. Of note, um, a new thing here is the leasehold excise tax. Um, the leasehold excise tax is a, um, the tax that's assessed, it's twelve point eighty-four. Um, that's assessed on the uh, rentals that we have over at the City Hall, City Hall North. And so we collect the taxes, remit that to the state, and the state turns around and gives us our four percent share. The four percent share is about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, and this revenue, that revenue is really um, unrestricted revenue. Um, so it could be used for any governmental purpose. Um, currently or in the previous years, this has been accounted for in a special revenue um, fund in the City Hall North. And so we're proposing to transfer that to the general funds it is, since it is unrestricted.
Armina?
Yes.
So w, we got in the state budget last year, a little over a million dollars for D R C C. That wouldn't be a general fund. But when does that get reflected on the budget? Or how does it get reflected in the budget?
For the, uh, I'll be, oh, that's part of the capital.
Okay, thank you.
Further down.
Oh, sorry, jumping ahead. Thanks.
Okay, um, so do you have any questions on the leasehold excise tax at this point? So that's, that's one of the big changes here. Um, here in none, I'm going to move forward to uh, charges for goods and services. Um, primarily, it is going to be um, below our budget by almost six hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Um, and that's from passport fees and photos. Uh, we're not, we are revising the budget by three hundred and forty-five or our projections. Law enforcement services, because we only um, have one S R O um, person instead of two. We are um, reducing our, our projection there by forty-four thousand as well. Other development fees, about twenty-two thousand. And then also our um, facility rentals and recreations are down by two hundred and forty-four thousand.
What's happening with the passport fees?
So the pass, so it's a combination of both the passport fees and the photos. The photos um, it was budgeted for, I want to say two hundred and sixty-two thousand. We have not implemented the photos since um, plus our passport um, customers are not as, as high as before and understand that these, so because Snohomish County and other surrounding cities have also off, started to offer the services. So there's been a little bit of a slowdown in that. And the State Department, of course, is still lagging in terms of the um, the turnaround on the applications. Moving on to our fines and penalties, the civil traffic and civil parking infractions are also down um, by hundred and fifteen thousand. And then our miscellaneous revenues, though, are up by five hundred seventeen thousand. Um, and that's projected to remain above five percent through twenty twenty-three and then four percent in twenty twenty-four. So recall that our miscellaneous revenue, majority of this is the investment interest that we are uh, receiving right now in L G I P. Um, their trend follows the federal funds rate. And lastly, um, we are proposing a transfers in from ARPA of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So this transfer, majority of this transfer is the investment interest that's um, credited to the ARPA funds. Um, according to the state and local fi, uh, fiscal recovery funds guideline, the ARPA funds are not subject to the restrictions or the requirements of two C F R two hundred dot three oh five B eight and nine. Um, which is to maintain the funds in an interest-bearing account and then remitting the interest earned above five hundred and such payments to treasury. So moreover, the interest earned on, on the ARPA funds are not subject to the program restrictions. Recipients may use earned income to defray the administrative um, expenses of the program. So um, the state auditor has recommended that we show the investment in the ARPA and then we transferred over to the general fund, and that's what we're recommending tonight. Are there any questions on the general fund revenues?
John, any questions? I can't see you. I don't hear any. Go ahead.
Um, moving on to our general fund expenditures, um, our general fund is going to be over by about six thousand dollars. Um, salary and benefits, about four point nine million of it, um, includes step increases and five percent increase in benefit. Yeah, um, especially our health benefits. Um, it does not include any retroestimates um, from the pending police yield C D A. The savings that we have of about two million from the vacancy has offset uh, the overages in the overtime. Uh, about nine hundred and ninety thousand, the overtime from P D because of their vacancies have gone up for coverage. And then for the maintenance and operations, we have, we are estimating seven point eight million, which includes the following. Um, half a million dollars for jail services. The cost increase will be three percent for boarding fees from nine hundred, excuse me, from one hundred ninety-three uh, dollars per day to almost one hundred ninety-nine per day. Um, and then the booking fees from three hundred thirty, excuse me, one hundred thirty-eight and seventy-four cents per person to one hundred forty-two and ninety cents, ninety cents per person. Also increasing the average day to eleven days. We also have two hundred and seventy-five thousand of unbudgeted contract costs that relates to the two grants that we received from the um, D O C for the G M A grants. We also have a hundred and thirty-two for the W C I A insurance premium, where we got notification of a twenty-five percent increase plus and my, or minus fifteen percent for in our experience rate. The expenses also include sixty-one thousand for software costs. Fifty-seven for litigation and settlement relating to the uh, P R R. Um, but we will keep the other legal expenses at the budget. We have forty-two thousand in estimated utility cost increases. That's about three to five percent of rate increase. We also have forty thousand for a C-wide leadership training. Um, thirty thousand for encampment cleanup. And the fire marshal service, we factored in a five percent increase, the Snohomish County dispatch, as well as the um, our legal prosecutor has provided a four percent increase um, on the rate. The capital um, projected expenses is going to be two hundred and five thousand, which includes about forty-nine thousand in prior year commitments specifically from the uh, or for the public safety vehicles. Three of the, three of the V, new vehicles, that's the cost of the build. The next slide shows the um, general fund expenditures in a different um, format. This is the um, distribution of the expenses by uh, by departments. As you can see, the savings from certain overhead departments like the city manager's office, finance, um, and city clerk offsets some of the operating overages, uh, of, operating departments overages. The police salary that you're seeing, um, the savings from the five vacancies that has, as I mentioned, have um, have covered the overtime as well as the jail costs, but it's not sufficient. Um, also the non-departmental um, department, the overage of a hundred and twenty-five represents the W C I A premium increases. And the community development represent, um, the overage there represents the two um, contracts relating to the grants from um, the D O C. Are there any questions on general fund expenditures? Moving on to the other funds. Um, for ARPA, the revenues of four hundred and eighty-six thousand is uh, equivalent to the investment interest that we've talked about. The expenses of four million includes the transfers out of um, the um, cash or the investments from ARPA to the general fund.
Into the mic, please.
On the ARPA funds, that four million, is that what has already been allocated or is estimated to be allocated?
Um, so it includes both.
Mm-hmm.
Um, about, I want to say about three, over three million of that relates to the funds that have already been committed. Um, and then the other um, million is for the next or the third um, phase of allocation that hasn't gone to council yet. But we're projecting by twenty twenty-four that we've committed them all, but not spent them all. Um, moving on to special revenue funds, council contingency fund, the uh, revenues that you're seeing, the four uh, thousand seven hundred and three relates to the investment um, income expenses of eight thousand three hundred ninety includes the um, prior year commitment that was paid in twenty twenty-three for the utility box wrap. Our north city hall fund, uh, four hundred and eighty thousand um, includes the increase in lease or N triple net charges from our new leases. Also, insurance recoveries of twenty thousand. Um, investment income of about thirty and the, and this excludes the leasehold excise tax, because it was previously in this one. The expenditures of two hundred seventy-eight thousand includes the W C I A insurance, their share of it, about three thousand. And also about an additional thirty-seven thousand for the rail concrete repair, which uh, would have the insurance recovery and additional um, repair to. repair to the tenant spaces before they occupy them.
Didn't we get some state funding for City Hall North?
Yes, we did.
Is that reflected in the revenue line?
Not in this one, in the capital ones.
Again, I'm getting ahead of you, sorry.
The new fund that we're proposing is the opioid settlement fund. This is a new one and it's reflective of the two resolutions that the council adopted in September and in April of this year, where we agreed to the settlement with the opioid manufacturers and distributors. To date, the city share of, the city's share of distribution, and that's about three years, it's about thirty thousand. And we have not drawn down that, those funds from the national distributor. But we need to establish the fund in order to draw that down and then also request for authorization for up to forty thousand equivalent to what we're expecting, expecting to receive in twenty twenty four. To implement programs consistent with approved strategies for the participation agreement. Or we could redirect the allocation to the opioid abatement council in the North Sound Region, which is an identified group. Okay, so debt service, this is the local revitalization fund. There is a twenty eight thousand unexpected revenue, this is another allocation from the county property taxes for the city of Mill Creek for the revitalization, but we are expecting to refund. And I think that's been authorized as well, or excuse me, budgeted in twenty twenty three, twenty four. So that's just an adjustment there. And moving on to our capital projects, okay, so our for our real estate excise tax, we are adjusting the projected revenue here relating to the decline of rate. The state in their June forecast or the Economic Revenue Forecast Council, they have revised their expectation on rate. They are now expecting a decline of forty four point three percent in twenty twenty three and another seventeen percent in twenty twenty four. And this is due to the increased mortgage rates and unaffordable high prices in the, in many areas. And so we are reducing our projections by one point five million. For the capital improvement fund, this one point one million includes the following. It includes the twenty three, twenty five state capital allocation for the City Hall North renovation. We received about, the net that we will receive is about four hundred ninety nine thousand five hundred. And another one hundred ninety two from the state for the library rehab. Also, a two thousand seventeen state grant for the Public Works Yard, that's about two hundred and forty nine thousand. And about a hundred and twenty nine for investment interest. Corresponding to that, we are projecting a one point four million expenses, which includes the corresponding authorization for the City Hall North renovation. This library rehab, which was budgeted only for a hundred and twenty. Since our state allocation is a hundred and ninety two, we are increasing the projection by seventy two thousand. Also, the Public Works Yard project was budgeted at seventy five. We are adjusting or adding a hundred and seventy four thousand to match the DOC grant. And also, we included a transfer out to the municipal art of six thousand nine hundred and nineteen sixteen. This is equivalent to one percent of the qualifying construction project. So this is one of the technical corrections that we are proposing to match the transfer in the municipal arts fund. Under the Parks and Open Space Capital Improvement, we are expecting revenues of about one point seven million, which includes the twenty three, twenty five state capital allocation for the multi-recreational property. It was their allocation was over a million dollars, net of the three percent administration fee. We are expected to get nine hundred and ninety nine thousand one hundred. Also, in twenty twenty three, we are, it includes partial funding for the DRCC master planning, a hundred ninety thousand. And potentially, we also included the Snohomish County Grant for the Library renovation, three hundred thousand in the North Creek Trail rehabilitation of one hundred thousand that you spoke of last, last week. But we also took away a hundred thousand of mitigation fees that were budgeted. We do not expect to see those revenues come in. On the expenditure side, the two million dollars that's budgeted in here includes the corresponding authorizations for the state and county allocations, as well as the Silver Crest Park project and the Pine Meadow Park restroom roof replacement. And we also added a transfer out to the municipal art of three, thirty five hundred or equivalent to one percent of qualifying construction projects. Again, to match the municipal, the revenues coming into the municipal arts fund. The la- lastly, we have the Road Improvement Fund, we are projecting about a hundred and nine, twelve thousand dollars here in revenue, which includes a potential federal funding of two hundred thousand from State Streets for All Grant. Also includes a DOC grant reimbursement that we received, seventy nine thousand for the Mill Creek sub area. And then reimbursements from Alderwood Water District for the surface water capping at Seattle Hill Road, that's about sixteen thousand. Also, we took away a hundred thousand of mitigation fees that were projected in this one. And the three point three million dollar in expenditure includes the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four overlay, slurry seal and NDA improvements. As well as the comp, the statewide comprehensive safe action plan, traffic and speed study and right-of-way mapping update. Are there any questions on capital projects?
John, speak up if you ever have a question because I can't see you on the screen.
Okay, no, I don't have any questions. Well, well done, Emma. Well done.
Okay, thank you. And then moving on to our surface water utility. The revenues of four point five million includes the surface water fees for twenty twenty three, which is at two hundred and twelve and eighteen cents per ESU, increasing by three percent in twenty twenty four to two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty five cents per ESU. We also have investment increases of four hundred eighty four thousand in here and an increase of the, of twenty five thousand from the Department of Ecology for the catch basin inspection. The expenditures of four point eight million includes the CIP programmed projects plus Sweetwater Ranch Storm Drain, Storm Main Replacement, the A and E, about three hundred thousand. But it excludes three projects, which are deferred past or deferred after twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four. The one sixty four Street Storm Water Pipe Replacement, the Mill Creek Boulevard, one sixty first Street Southeast Storm Water Replacement, one fifty ninth place Southeast Storm Water Replacement. And then lastly, for the projections, we have the Equipment Replacement Fund. We have six hundred and forty eight thousand projected in revenue, which includes the transfers from the general funds, streets and waters, which were emitted in the adopted budget. It also includes investment of one hundred and five thousand and sale of fixed asset proceeds from that about ten thousand. And expenditures, there was a typo in the packet that was sent to you. It was reported that the expenditures were three hundred and forty three, the correct amount is two hundred and seventy five thousand. And that is for the computer refresh and the public vehicles replacement. Okay, moving on to the proposed budget modifications, they, and this would be an attachment to of your packet. We are proposing, the first adjustment will be to adjust the beginning balances of our reserves by one, by five point one million from thirty four million to thirty nine point two million to reflect the actual ending of fund reserves at the end of twenty, at the end of December thirty one of twenty twenty two.
John, go ahead.
I, was that twenty two or, or twenty three?
At the end of December thirty one, which is the beginning of January. So you could say it is also the beginning of January one of twenty twenty three.
And that's the estimated annual revenues for twenty three, correct?
No, that's the, so when we adopted the budget, it, the estimated reserves at the end of twenty twenty two was thirty four million dollars. The actual reserves at the, at the end of the year of tw- ending twenty twenty two was higher by five million.
Right, I see that, okay.
So we're proposing to make that adjustment so that we have we, we would, we know how much fund balance we have and we will not exceed that fund balance when we make any recommendations or when you, when council makes decisions on what to spend.
So you're, you're not proposing to add five million to the thirty four, that's not what you're proposing?
No, I am proposing to correct the thirty four thousand to, by five million to reflect the correct balances at the, at the beginning of the fiscal year.
I'm confused, though, I thought we had had we, had we budgeted thirty four million or is that what the numbers came out to be? I'm sorry, I'm, I must have misunderstood that. The thirty four million is a projected number, correct?
Correct.
Not, not our budgeted number, okay, that makes sense. And you feel that we need to get to thirty nine million to balance out?
No, the first column, John, was the estimated, and if you jump over two columns to the actuals, the actual amounts of those reserves at one, one twenty three was higher than we had projected when we adopted the budget.
Right.
Mending the budget to reflect the actuals rather than the estimated.
So we're not suggesting to reduce the amount back to the thirty four million?
No, we're proposing to use the actual numbers to reflect that based on the actuals, we're now projecting to have five million more in the reserves than we thought we were going to have at the end of the biennium.
Okay. Okay, so again, I, I think I'm understanding this, we, we, we budgeted thirty four, we look like we have thirty nine, so we're adjusting the numbers to reflect that we now have thirty nine million in reserves.
Bingo.
Okay.
The second budget modification is also in detail in Exhibit B of attachment two. And this includes revenue budget modifications of three point two million dollars, increasing our adopted revenues of three point four billion to three point, to thirty seven point seven million. And then also, our expenditures will be increased from forty one point six million to forty four point six million, so that's a three million dollar increase. And I'll go through those details in a minute. So the first so the budget modifications, I've grouped them in certain categories. The first one, which is, which relates to twenty twenty three resolutions that, where we deferred the budget adoption. There's four items in there, a total of four hundred and fourteen thousand dollar increase in revenues and a hundred and ninety thousand increase in expenditures. The first two, the first one relates to the Mill Housing Grant that was approved, and that's a hundred and fifty thousand. Also, the resolution for the opioid settlement, those are two resolutions for forty thousand. And then there's the resolution for the Department of Ecology, no, excuse me, the DRCC master plan for one hundred ninety nine, that's just adjusting the revenue to match what the allocation is. Also, the Department of Ecology for the biannual storm water capacity grant, where we received twenty five thousand additional revenue. So the the screen that you're seeing tonight has the first section that explains the justification and then with the funds that it's affecting and whether it's an increase or decrease on the revenues or expenditure side. The next category of budget modifications relate to the twenty three, twenty five state capital budget and/or the Snohomish County twenty twenty four capital budget, which includes the allocation for the City Hall North renovation, the multi-recreational property and the Snohomish County Council Grant for the Library Park Upgrade and the North Creek Trail Rehab. In total, we are increasing revenues or proposing to increase revenues by about one point nine million and expended, matching expenditures for the same amount.
And just on the, the comment you made about the county funds, I mean, this is just a study session, we're not taking action on these. Won't be taking action till probably sometime in November because we won't know if we have those county dollars till the county adopts it. Probably do sometime in November.
That's correct. The next category, which is a lot, are all just technical corrections. This means that either it's already in the budget, one part of it is in the budget or, and we're matching or making corrections to make sure that any matching transfers in or out are accounted for. As well as any increases in or account, accounting for investment interests that we've talked about, as well as the leasehold excise tax treatment or from City Hall North Fund to the general fund. And all of those technical corrections, revenue in total is about one point four million dollars and about seven hundred and fifty nine thousand in expenditures. Of note, we have correction numbers seventeen in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty eight, the CIP document in, doesn't include the bridges monitoring in the CIP document, but it is included in the budget. And so what we did when we discovered that is we're proposing to remove a hundred and eighty three thousand dollars from five, three eighteen to match the CIP document. Also, the grants for the Public Works Yard, as well as the state allocation again for the rehab projects. For the library, we've increased the, the revenue as well as the expenditures to match the allocations that we've, that I've mentioned earlier, as well as the emitted transfers out to to the municipal art from the Capital Projects Fund. And the transfers in from the community development public work, streets and surface water into the Equipment Replacement Fund of about two hundred and fourteen thousand. And our last category, excuse me, the second to the last category of budget modifications are the assumption updates, the corrections based on the state projections, as well as the economic indicators that we've mentioned earlier and any contract notifications that we received. We are proposing to decrease revenues by five hundred nine thousand dollars and increase expenditures by two hundred and seven thousand, the detail of which are listed in the exhibit B for assumption updates.
Does, does the city always use the state's projected numbers in rate?
For their beat and for other state revenues, we should. Because they are the ones that are really giving us, whatever projections they have on the revenue, they turn around and give us a share of that revenue. And most of them are based on a per capita basis, so it's would be, I don't think it would be conservative if we go our different route based on trend. That's why we, I, I, I think when, I believe that when we developed the budget for twenty three, twenty four, Laurel was using the same information that MRSC has provided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and then lastly. I've added a last category for prior year commitments, and this is just one number. Um, we're increasing um the council. I want to say the council um contingency fund by a hundred and ten thousand, excuse me, by thirty four hundred. And this uh is to make them whole for the art uh box wrap project that was committed by council in twenty twenty two, but paid in twenty twenty three. Um, that concludes my report. Um, and I'm happy to answer questions or and open it up for discussion.
Very thorough, any questions, comments? Yeah, Councilmember Cavalry.
Thanks, Mayor, uh, great presentation, really was. Do, do we have to, the opioid settlement monies, do we have to have that in its own fund? Do we have to create a new fund? I know one of the things we ran into years ago was, was all these random funds, funds that when you look at. Another administration looks at later, they're like, where are all these monies? Why don't we consolidate them?
So technically, because the funds are restricted, um, we have to make it a separate fund than any other. So we can make sure it's transparent and we are in accordance with the provisions of the settlement agreement. So the settlement agreement is saying you have to use these funds that you're gonna get um on the strategy sets provided in that um participation agreement. Um, either that or you can redirect the funds to another, another regional. If we bury it or combine it with, I was thinking about that, like thinking that we could maybe combine it with a drug fund. Um, because I, I thought they were consistent, but when I looked at the legislation or the R C W relating to the drug um buy fund. I did not think they were very consistent, because I, it's narrower, the um requirements or the strategies for the use of the opioid fund is very narrow. And so it was more prudent for us to um create a separate fund for it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Paddock.
Thank you very much, two questions. Um, one, when do we need to bake in an estimate for uh the, the public safety negotiation, kind of look back and pay forward?
The.
The guilt, the police guilt contract.
Um, I, I'm not sure, are, are you, uh, if you're, if, if the, I'm not sure I understood the question, is it?
So I think we're expecting that there'll be a um bump, obviously, in, in back pay. For our, our, our police officers, when do we estimate that for our budget? Sounded like that's not in here yet.
So that is correct, we did not include the retro payments relating to the police CBA, we don't know what that looks like yet. So we didn't factor that in, we would do the um projections and the budget adjustment for um the increase of uh salary. When they, when the CBA is concluded or ratified. So, and I don't.
Wouldn't it be prudent to estimate that for our budget?
I don't think you want to tip your hat to the union of what you think the. A- affect what we might be willing to pay or not pay.
Never mind, um, the other question is, if you wouldn't mind going back to the uh, the timeline.
Sure.
I, I have a bit, little bit difference of opinion, but um, understand what you're saying. Um, go back to the timeline, just see what's next. I lost the next step and uh.
Oh, that's not right, sorry.
Discussion.
The next step in this process?
Yes, sir.
But we'll be bringing the formal ordinances back for public hearings and getting public comment before we take action on them for. We have to make decisions on the property taxes, any changes before the end of November, before November thirtieth?
Yes. Is it? It's a.
Yeah, so we have a study session next week.
Yes, so on Tuesday, we will talk about the property tax, the proposed twenty twenty four property tax levy, as well as the CIP amendment. And then we will have, we are required to have um public hearings, and so will, that would happen uh on the twenty fourth of October. And then the final um public hearing and the um adoption of the ordinances by um November seventh.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison.
Yeah, just uh one simple question, and mostly because I'm.
I will press the button and turn off.
Involved with the, uh, keeps turning back on, um. Uh, involved with the uh Legislative Committee, so um, there was a change in the drug possession laws. And with that change, some additional responsibility fell to the cities when people are only charged with a misdemeanor. Is any of our prosecutor fee increases related to any of that?
I don't know that we can project that increase yet, because it's so new.
Okay.
Very, very difficult, uh, to date, we've only had one case, and we're relaying this thing that, this is only since August, right? That we're really seeing this change, so we've had one case of uh. Is that the controlled substance?
Okay.
Uh, so that's, it's too small of a scope, right?
Yeah, 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 okay, gotcha, it's worth a conversation, I guess, with the legislators, though.
John, did you have any questions or comments?
No, no, I don't, uh, just wanted to confirm that study session though is on the sixth, correct? Not study session, but a um finance committee meeting on, on property tax revenues, correct?
Correct, that would be on Friday.
Thank you.
Yeah, Vince, to your comment about re, let's hope the interest rates come down, that's what's killing the market right now, I think. Redfin estimates that sixty six percent of homeowners now have an interest rate below four percent. So without, with interest rates at above seven percent, it's hard for homeowner to decide to sell their home and. Take on additional costs with higher mortgage rates. Uh, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to thank um Armina for this great presentation and for all the time she spent with the Finance Committee. Already ahead of this presentation, um, going over everything with us and answering all our questions. And tweaking things that we um mentioned or had questions about, so I just want to thank you for, for all of that. Time and effort that, that goes in behind the scenes that everyone else doesn't see, because you spend quite a lot of time with us going over all of this. So thank you and uh, thank you for the great presentation to everyone.
My pleasure, thank you.
Think that's it for tonight, thank you. We're good?
Thank you.
Uh, we have no consent agenda tonight, so uh, city manager, your reports, staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, first report is uh, on the back wall, you'll see ten maps that were curated. Uh, by the M T C A over a number of years, and I don't call the exact years, but you take a look, the years are on there uh at the bottom of each one. Just wanted to thank the F D C A and um Hillary Bublitz uh for donating those uh maps to us. The second is just an update on the surplus of equipment, I thought it was gonna, last week I had a, a report that we'd put on consent this week. But that was incorrect, it's gonna be on the tenth, so just want to make that correction. Uh, third report is, uh, we, uh, we added a new page to our website called trending topics, thanks, but. Um, that provided, that will provide um public and our community with an idea of what the. So-called hot topics are that are um. Trending out there in the community. And the final report is, uh, with response to Councilmember um Cavalary's request on the Guild Update. We will, uh, we put on the agenda, an executive session on October twenty fourth, but we come up, coming up in two weeks.
Thank you, City Manager.
And that's into my reports, Mayor, yeah, I'll pass it over to uh the chief.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Mayor Protam, Council, uh, somewhat of a longer report tonight, but I have a lot of great information to share.
But before we get started then, it sounds like we're gonna need a little extra time, uh, well, if we have a motion to extend to nine o'clock, I hope we don't need that.
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, any abstentions, the motion passes six to zero, uh, Councilmember Paddock was out of the room.
I thank you, Mayor, um, in regards to uh emergency preparedness and disaster prep, preparation. Um, we're pleased to announce that next year we'll be in, having four classes on this topic for our community. Um, Chaplain Nick Lewis from the Police Department is uh, has provided these courses in the past. Um, these are courses that will educate residents to be prepared uh to survive a, a, an incident. Um, without electricity, water, and other services as long as possible. Uh, the knowledge can also be gained through a two-hour uh initial emergency and disaster workshop that we provide. Workshop covers the first steps to identify safety hazards, including gas explosions, potential fires, water main shot-offs, and other safety concerns. Um, this course will be offered uh on February thirteenth, May fourteenth, August thirteenth, and November twelfth. And of course, we're gonna be working with the Communications and Marketing uh Group to uh. Get these posted as, as much as possible beforehand and see if we can get as many registrations as possible. So we're looking forward to a really great course through uh Chaplain Nick Lewis, and it, this is similar to his uh. What used to called Map Your Neighborhood, but it's been designed for more emergency and disaster preparedness. Secondly, there's been a concern regarding traffic safety throughout the community, um, and we've done what we can to address that on the patrol at, on a day-to-day basis. Um, but with our staffing shortage, a lot of our directed time is utilized. Um, and therefore, the discretionary time to, to apply towards traffic enforcement has not been as uh. It, as readily available as we'd like it to be, a lot of our officers, because of we're, we're, our staffing, our directed time, calls for service and things of that nature. Um, and some of the higher priority issues that we have. But on September twenty first, um, we did have an imp- traffic emphasis within the city, I was able to obtain some uh. T Z T or Trap Target Zero Team fundraiser, fu- funding, grant funding, and we had two officers on an eight-hour shift. Um, during that time, uh, the volunteers Detective White and Officer LaRose uh actually had quite a bit of uh activity. Uh, issued thirty one speeding violations, uh, four distracted driving violations, four seatbelt violations, and one child safety seat violation. But they also issued twenty nine warnings, so I was really appreciative of the discretion that the officers used. Although they are there on an emphasis, they were, they utilized, it was about the, the quality of the violation versus the quantity of the violations that they were enforcing, so. Uh, really appreciate the work from Target Zero Team and the relationship we have with them. On these high visi- high visibility campaign and uh events are, are going to be more prevalent in the, in the city in the upcoming future. We did sign a new agreement with uh the Washington Traffic Safety Committee. And so we're hopefully, uh, we have, hopefully to hear back from them shortly uh as to what the allocation will be, so, should be nice.
Chief, can we do um like, uh, maybe a press release or at least put something out on the city's website to announce that we're, you know? They're out in force, slow down, step up, yeah, yes, thank you.
And lastly, a, a bit of a staffing update, we do currently have five vacancies in the Police Department for commissioned positions. We do have one offer that has been signed by a candidate, so if that goes through and he starts November first, we'll be down to four vacancies. We did have twenty one um individuals participate in the oral board last week. And we have six of those twenty one scheduled for polygraph examinations this week. Um, so we are moving through this list very rapidly. Um, just for reference, we have probably processed close to a hundred and fifty applicants this year. Um, so uh, it's, it's just a matter of finding individuals that meet the qualifications, and we feel are fit for our community as well. So um, we are very cognizant of this issue, and we are doing the best to get those positions filled as quickly as possible. Um, we do have some now uh civilian positions available within the Police Department. Um, and we are uh scheduling seventy two applications, seventy two candidates for a written exam, civil service exam. On October thirteenth, so uh more to come on that as we, as we move forward.
Any questions for the chief?
Great job, Chief.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yeah, so just one question, that one that you have the offer, um, is that a transfer, a lateral or?
It's an entry-level candidate, so they will need to go to the academy, so we do have to worry about that timeframe that, uh, that, that timeframe has reduced significantly. Um, I will say that for um Officer Tran, who was recently uh selected to join the department, recently hired. He was originally, I think we uh sent in his uh registration, I want to say maybe three months ago. And we received a projected academy date of February, but he now starts the academy October seventeenth. So they are starting to bump up more, more sooner, um, but we just hope that trend continues.
Thank you.
No other reports, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, our reports, I have no report, but I have no report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I have um a couple of things to report and a couple of comments as well. Um, first, um, I went in the mayor's place to um a luncheon with the mayor and business leader. Group where they had Sam um Kionis, um, a reporter from L A speaking about fentanyl. Um, it was a very interesting discussion, it sparked quite a few um interesting discussions amongst the people that were there. And some questions, um, I also spoke with, while I was there. Before I left, I spoke with Executive Summers, had sent someone um from his office there, and he is going to be coming out with a plan. Um, soon for um fentanyl in the county, and so I'm interested to see um what he is gonna come out with. And looking forward to learning more about that, um. It's clear that we need more treatment dollars, it's, it's very important that we have some funding. Because. We have to do treatment and. It costs a lot of money. Um, I think from my perspective, from the whole meeting, I would like to see, and for the mayor meeting group, um. In the future, two mayors, if you guys have discussions, I, I'd like to see some more discussions like this, but with some. Um, field experts too, like social service workers or um. People that are actually, that deal with this, um, instead of just a reporter, because I think that was a great place to start the conversation. But I would like to find out more details, uh, because I think it's really important that we take a really good look at this. And craft some smart policy, um, so I'd be interested in hearing from some more specialists. Um, second, I went uh to the ribbon cutting last night for a brand-new preschool in the city, so that was really fun. It's uh Mill Creek Preschool, and they're actually right up here in the town center, so um. I thought that was really interesting and neat that they are finding some new ways to use the town center. Um, and being inventive, so that's not something that I would have expected to go in right here at the town center, so it's kind of nice to see something. Coming in to be used um there, um, and then I had a couple of comments, um. One, I reached out to city managers today. I would like us to start to look at possibly doing a city council newsletter. Other cities do one, so people could sign up, and we actually would send out um. Quarterly uh newsletter, just with updates from the council and what the council has accomplished and done, if anyone is interested in that. Because we aren't doing that right now, and I think that would be a great way to get word out to the public of the things that we are doing. Not just the things that the city staff is doing, because they have their own things to get out, but something is actually things that the council did. Um, so people can be in the know, um, I also have um something that I. Something that has bothered me since I first got on council, and I have not said anything, but um. With recent conversations, it makes me want to ask this question, so I am curious, the legalities. Behind um people needing to give their address when they give a co- public comment. So I don't know if this is just something that we have in our code, or if there's a legal reason for it, because. It, it's always concerned me that somebody would have to give their address, uh, because what if they're in a domestic violence situation? Or some of the situation where it makes them nervous to actually give out their address. And to go on the record and have to say where they live in order to comment, I think it um inhibits people from communicating, and so I'm. I'd be interested to find out a little more of, in seeing if council is, because would be interested in doing that too, to see. If maybe we could just do something where they say if they live in Mill Creek or not, but not their street address, because I have concerns. Um, and finally, the chief forgot to tell us that we have Coffee with the Cop in the morning, I think, I'm not wrong, am I? So there is Coffee with the Cop tomorrow, and I will be there.
That is correct, Mayor, Protam, I, I, I did neglect that, Coffee with the Cup tomorrow at uh Visible. Um, and we'll be there, it's on the website, please join us.
Grant, can you respond next week to the question that Mayor raised?
I can respond now if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
There's not a requirement. Um, so y- y- you could say, um, you know, you could ask. You know, anybody wants to provide public comment, you know, if we have your name and your residence, you know, in other words, I'm, my name is. John Doe, and I'm a resident of Mill Creek, or I'm a resident of Linwood, but you don't have to provide your address.
Could we also say your neighborhood, like Cottonwood?
That can be done too, there's not a, there's not. That can be done too. There's not a, there's not a requirement to provide your street address or your, you know, your actual mailing address in order to provide comment.
We will put it on an agenda for discussion in the next week, next meeting or two. Any other reports, Mayor Protam?
Nope.
Councilmember Cavalier?
No report, but, no, just kidding. Chief, really good job doing the speed emphasis. That has been on the doorstep, the number one. Number one and number two, it flip flops between homelessness and speed. But folks are really concerned, really Village Green Drive, you know, just take your, pick your poison there. Good job. I applaud it. Thank you.
Councilmember Sticker.
I really don't have any report.
Councilmember Allison.
Yeah, just another kudos to the traffic emphasis. Every day when I'm on Mill Creek Boulevard, I sit my, hit my autopilot to twenty-five and I wind up with all these angry people behind me, even though that's the speed limit. So I, I know how how much is going on out there. So let's see, the other thing that I wanted to mention, I had no real reports, but it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month and this is Pink Week. So to support, encourage, honor those facing breast cancer, the diagnosis, the treatment and the recovery, just to get checked. That's all.
Councilmember Duque.
I just got a fun text. Is it someone's birthday today?
Yes, it is. We're going to get to his report next.
Okay, that's, that was just a, no report.
And the birthday boy, Councilmember Paddock, any reports?
Thank you for that. I do have a couple of things. I just ditto on Chief, the, the speed patrols. I actually drove past one of those, either warnings or giving tickets and sent a number of folks a, well, it may really be happening. So I appreciate that. And I also appreciate your consistent, if it's monthly or every six weeks or so, coming in with a status update, data-driven status update on hiring. I think that's really important that the departments do that and I really, for transparency for our community, I really appreciate that. Excuse me, a number of us that are here actually last weekend and as well as some representatives from across the county had an opportunity to go to an event for a group called Girls on the Run of Snohomish County. And it's a not-for-profit support group for the empowerment of, of girls, primarily in elementary school, but also some in, in middle schools where they do running clubs to help boost self-esteem and the sense of camaraderie and leadership with these, with these girls. And it was just an amazing event, raised a lot of money and a lot of awareness. I, I think we had a lot of enthusiasm for what that group does in the other school district and specifically here in Mill Creek Elementary Schools and in the, the middle schools. And I just thought it was fantastic and thanks for all of you who participated. Lastly, John, please come back. It's lonely down here on the end of the dais and looking forward to seeing you in a week or two.
I should be back in a couple of weeks.
That it? Happy birthday. Audience communication, anyone in chambers like to address council? I see a knot of heads and negative. Anyone online? Mr. Nelson, your name, please.
Will Nelson, Mill Creek, Washington, Red Cedar subdivision. It's a very important survey mentioned on the news the other day and I thought the results of that survey were very profound. Apparently, a survey was conducted and they have declared that picket ball is allowed an obnoxious sport. And I think everybody needs to be aware of that. I join that conclusion wholeheartedly. Secondly, on your opioid settlement money, I'm always leery of these types of things in that we're buying into a big bureaucracy with insufficient funds going to handle, tackle the problem. My two cents. Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else online? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. With that, we have nothing further on agenda, so if there's no objection, we'll adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-five and reconvene a week from good night, everyone.
Good night.